All right, it is six thirty and I am proud to call this meeting of the Wood Creek City Council. The order in our regular city council meeting, it's May eighth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. And I'm asking everyone to please stand for a moment, and then stay standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, acted one with faith, under God, one and indivisible. Maybe some. Um, if you go ahead and fill in for um, the comments. Yeah, I know the gentleman said, does he have anything?
Thank you.
Um, but, it'll be fine. We'll take the vote.
Mayor Jeff Raskin.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Ryan Stan, Councilmember Lenny Abey, here. Councilmember Chris Comer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Herbert.
Here.
Councilmember Christopher.
Yeah.
And go there, thank you. Um, the first order of business is a proclamation, I am going to take liberty in reading it, it is important. Um, our proclamation, um, in honor of our military service members. And proclamation reads, whereas the residents of Wood Creek, Texas hold profound respect and gratitude for the brave men who serve in our nation's military, dedicating themselves to the defense of our freedoms and values. And whereas the sacrifices made by our military personnel, veterans and their families are deserving of the utmost recognition and appreciation. And whereas with Loyalty Day on May first, Victory in Europe Day and Military Spouse Appreciation Day on May eighth today, Armed Forces Day on May sixteenth and Memorial Day on May twenty-fifth. This is a significant hunt for the military offering multiple occasions to commemorate their valor, dedication and contributions. And whereas the month of May has been designated as Military Appreciation Month nationwide, providing an opportunity for communities across the country to honor and express gratitude to those who have served and continue to serve our country. And whereas the city of Wood Creek recognizes the importance of honoring our military members and veterans, not only during Military Appreciation Month, but throughout the year, acknowledging their contributions to our nation's security and well-being. And whereas it is fitting and proper for the city of Wood Creek to officially designate May twenty twenty-four as Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all residents to join in commemorating bravery, dedication and sacrifices for military personnel and veterans. Now therefore, I Jeff Raskin, Mayor of Wood Creek, Texas, do hereby proclaim May twenty-four as Military Appreciate Month in our city. I urge all residents to take this opportunity to honor their military members, veterans and their families, and to express our sincere gratitude for their service and commitment to our nation. And witnessing thereof, I appear to for set my hand of the seal of the city of Wood Creek to do this this eighth day of May in the year two thousand twenty-four. And I also want to express my gratitude to Councilmember Brummer, um, for his attention to the on that, so we can do this for the month of May, thank you. All right, so, um, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So. This won't be long, Derek. Speaking to agenda speaker, no one will get to the bottom. Um, so we'll move to the consent agenda approval of the minutes from April twenty-four.
I move for you to approve the April twenty-four minutes.
I think we can vote by a pair of hands. Call my favor, say aye, raise a hand.
Aye.
You both, no, all right, thank you. Thanks on the agenda, a report by city manager on Deerfield Drive, sir.
Yes, sir. Sir. Wanted to give an update on Deerfield Drive since it's been a while since we last talked about it. If any interest.
You got the left. So I'm gonna left three.
Standing on page eleven, one.
Yes.
All right. If y'all will remember back, this Deerfield, we, well, we put in for, Councilmember Brummer put in for uh, a grant with the Texas Agricultural Commission, Sid Miller, to pay a portion of Deerfield Drive. And so, this is what was presented for the grant. And as you can see, the pink line is what the grant covers. So, um, this was in the original packet that went with our application and all the information. And so it covers half of Deerfield and then we, we are responsible for the other end. Okay? In December, we were notified that we were a recipient of the grant. Um, and so we, we, uh, as I was by myself in the building, did, I was by myself, uh, went up to Austin, signed the paperwork with the C P D G grant people. Um, and we got that started. Um, the first phase of this, it started on two, two, one of twenty-four is when the actual grant started. Um, and so the first phase of the grant is an environmental review. Um, since this is money from the state, there are additional steps that have to be taken in order for us to meet the requirements of the grant course. So the first one is an environmental review. So that takes up to six months, could take a little bit longer, but let's just say six months. Um, and so from two, so environmental review will not be done until, um, let's say July or August of this year. After that, um, I have spoken with the engineering firm that is, uh, doing the plans and the bid sheet for this project. If you remember in the very beginning in their bid sheet on the project, they had, um, curb and gutter. They had ditches. They wanted to, uh, expand our street by three feet. So I had a conversation with them about this. Um, what they presented, I doubt will ever get made. Due to the fact that they wanted to expand the street by three foot and put six foot dishes, ditches on both sides. When I pointed out that, um, one is that there is not enough room on that street to do that. Um, one is for the trees, they would have to cut down quite a few, I think protected or hairy trees just to do that. And then plus two, after you have the, let's see, twelve plus three, or the, yes, six, the six, well, the the extra fifteen foot, basically people wouldn't have a driveway. Their cars would be sitting in the street. So, uh, also two with the drainings, they were going to drain it on Veterans Park. And, and they're going to put a big culvert that ran underneath Wood Creek Drive on the Champion Circle side. It was supposed to go through that little gutter and go down the park to France Road twelve. Um, if you've seen Veterans Park and the park across the street, they're really know the drainies there. So basically, they can't do that. So they are, they have gone back to the drawing board to start over. Because they have, they didn't even come out here and look at it. Um, so, yeah. So as for the actual plan, what we get, I do not know. But what they presented before will not work. As they previously had it, there didn't, needs to be a lot of thinking. And we got on Google Earth with them and I showed them all the trees and the driveways and they're like, oh my gosh, we didn't know. And so, um, so once the environmental study is over, after six months, then we'll start going into the engineering phase, which depends upon how long it takes to develop that. Then we would go into the bid phase. After the bid phase, we will, you know, take up the bid and then we will get closed bids. And then we actually will grant the project to somebody to do the work. We have not received any money from them, C P D G, we have not received a dime for them. We have only been notified that we're this in here. We will not get money for them until we're ready to do construction. Um, so, for Deer, the Deerfield Drive, probably the best scenario is that we might have something in October. But I wouldn't put that in right. We are at the mercy of the, um, environmental study and the, um, engineering firm to develop some sort of plan. Once they develop a plan, we'll look at it, when it becomes viable, we'll bring it before this council's, y'all can see what the plans are to get your input on it as well. But it may need many months before we get this project going at the.
Do our engineers have any, any oversight on this, have they been working with them or?
No.
They'll be looking at it, but they don't have any say in.
Correct. Yeah, no, they don't have any say, it's T L C out of, out of Houston.
Okay, I saw Chris's hand first.
Um, I just have a question, since it's, in the meantime, are we considering patches?
We did.
Oh, we made a, like, I said, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So tell them what you told me, or did it?
I don't get that, that's.
Okay.
Uh. On social media, that's the only.
Yeah, we, yeah, no, we went down, we had, we had two bags of asphalt left, so we put it down there. And, um, some people were not happy about it. About that, yeah.
Oh, because.
So I put it that way.
They want, they prefer the road, but, yeah, we're not there yet. And I, and I want to stress the point as well that the mayor made, which is the plans that we're seeing are all out of the city's control. To the extent that this is all the primary work, the states and the engineers for this, the community development block grant, they are presenting these things at that stage and you're working with them.
What you, I don't understand, no, this is what was presented to us in order to put in.
But these are part plan.
Yeah, these are.
Correct, correct, we signed off on, yes. And then if you go to the next one, so they actually came out here and did a survey, because they didn't even do a survey on it first. And so actually now, it was going to the cul-de-sac, but in the document it says five hundred and fifty feet, keep going up, go to the colored button.
There you are.
So now it's not even go to, going to the cul-de-sac.
Huh?
Or the corner. Or the corner. And so we will be responsible for, um, taking it from that point and run it all the way. So we got a little bit over half of what they do, we're gonna have to use our bond money to, to do that. But that, no, that's where they're at now, um, with the recent survey.
And.
The mayor did the first honors.
No.
I have a question, um, so, so, you know, we originally said, okay, well, we originally thought they were going to be able to do the whole thing. Then we can't do the whole thing, we'll do, or the cul-de-sac and that sort of stuff. But if they went in, if the engineers went in and said, okay, you know, they don't want drains. And so we're gonna put in curbs and gutters and, and six foot ditches and all that stuff. I mean, if they're not going to be doing all that, is there a chance that the money could stretch it a little bit further? So that this may not be the.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what they're gonna come up with, because.
This is just the current.
This is where we're at now, we, yes, um, I'm working with Grant Works, there's, um, the gentleman, we've been passed on to the project engineer now. He actually is a local resident, although we do everything by Zoom. Um, but what, I've been working with him, I'm getting with some engineering firm and doing meeting with them, trying to going along. And we check in regularly and, and, you know, like I said, the, the main thing is this environmental review that has to be done and it's just, it's, it goes slow. So, yeah, it's gonna be some time before it gets done.
Does matter. So what about the possibility of rather than these three foot or six foot ditches or whatever they are, doing something like ribbon curb, which is expensive, but may well be within the scope of this project?
Yes.
And we wouldn't need dishes, ribbon curb could very well.
I know ribbon curb.
Is sure of that. I mean, they can't put the dishes in, there's no, right, but there is plenty of room for ribbon curb.
Right, right.
And that would, that would shore up that asphalt very well, make it last for a much longer period of time.
Correct, and that's what we're looking at, you know, I can't comment on, on, everything is, is being looked at. So yes, when they come back to us with a plan or some type of, you know, viability, although our engineers are not part of it, um, I will be going to them for a second look of eyes, because the last couple of months working with them, they're, they're really very trusted with me. And so they will be looking at it and basically double checking that work, but yes, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll make some suggestions, I'm, I'm sure, and, and really question them on why they do what and, you know, can you put ribbon curb in? Can you do this, can you do that? And, and walk them along the process, you know.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Was there any drainage allowed for this? It's just, I remember we paid such a large number, five hundred thousand compared to what we paid for it. And I guess I was hopeful that there will be some act of drainage.
Their, their drainage was to put ditches on both sides of the street. Um, that is not doable for, you know, there's no boxes, there's driveways, there's the trees. You just can't do that, so I do not know what they're gonna come up with. Um, we will have to wait and see.
The drainage needs to be part of.
Right, if, if I can address your question, actually, um, so when I walked out with the initial engineer walking along the streets, because it did mean nervous street at the time, um, at that time, the consideration was the entire Deerfield. And where he was most concerned was after the turn in the middle, where water comes down, actually from, from Meadow area, under the banks and then through and then into the long force. And he was concerned mostly there about the money. And so in his mind, the way he started was, you know, we leave over there, small little round building that they would pull up to, pull it, so, and put them under the, the ones with the gloves. Grab it and get in the road and take it off the road. So when we do our section.
Was that with Grant Works?
That was with the Grant Works engineer when he came out.
Okay, but it wasn't the engineer that went, because they never even looked past the cul-de-sac.
Well, this was, it's like the limited area, the.
Oh, just looking at the ideal.
Like, before we put this package together, I need to actually see the space, so I walked out on the, along all the street.
Right.
Um, so his concern was, it's hard to see on the maps, but.
Yeah, on the other. The portion that's not in the, and, and we, we'll have to deal with that separately.
Yeah, I see.
And so, you know, if there need to be some drainage stuff, uh, on our portion, you know, we can look at that. But as for the Deerfield grant.
Yeah.
They'll look at it just for that small portion that, that's included. And it may get, like, you know, if you can't do all the stuff that they were looking to do, maybe we can expand the four hundred and fifty feet to go around the curb and, and do more of that, I just, we, we are very early in the stages and we have no plan. Um, I'll put it to you that, that way. There is no, um, yeah, we're kind of waiting to see what they come up with. Any other questions in terms to?
What, what are your concerns in my question? Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the regular agenda, the first on, item on the agenda is, um, to discuss and take appropriate action on the updated uh, interlocal agreement for the Blanco Cypress Watershed Protection Plan. And, um, we do have a couple of comments from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's my first time, so where should I stand, just right here?
Uh, it's right here, the back street. It's better if you sit down.
Okay, yeah.
And it's gonna get your belly button.
Okay.
Thank y'all for having me, I'm Jenna Walker, I am the Director of Watershed Services at the Center for Water and the Environment at Texas State University. And I've been working with Mayor Raskin and the city of Wimberly and Hays County and Watershed Association and Texas State on, um, moving forward with a continuation of the Cypress Creek Watershed Protection Plan. And we have, um, developed it to continue forces, but I'm gonna keep the screen, the Texas Commission for Environmental Quality, um, funded the Watershed Protection Plan for over ten years. That funding ended this past August. And, um, my experience as a Watershed Coordinator and working in this line of work and understanding Watershed Protection Plans funded by T C Q and Environmental Protection Agency is that they are designed as kind of seed money to, to then be taken on by a community to, to then be more of a community supported program moving forward. So, um, we've been meeting over, over the past year to figure out how each community can, can support this type of Watershed Protection Plan moving forward. And, um, the Ha, uh, Hayes County has been very generous and taken a leadership role to um, volunteer to, to fund a Watershed Coordinator position to oversee all of the, um, actions. And then also fund, fully fund the water quality monitoring to continue that, that effort. And, um, the, the overall goal for this is to keep Cypress Creek clean, clear and flowing. And so we are expanding our efforts to look upstream through the, um, the top of the watershed, um, and within the county boundary and then include Cypress Creek as well. So I, I hope that y'all will support this with the interlocal agreement. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions and really, really appreciate y'all's unwavering support over the years to, to keep this creek, this very precious creek clean, clear and flowing so far.
Well, we appreciate everything that the Center does for everybody in the valley, but you've been helpful, uh, for sure. Um, this is something that we've already, that we approved last year, um, and put into place, which I forgot um, inconveniently. And I'm sure Jenna had a little, sort of, in part, conversation, but, but anyway, we got that all cleared up. Um, I think we're the last to sign, I know that the county stepped forward big time, as you said. Uh, I think they came through, uh, better than expected.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that, that's good. Um, so the, the position itself is pretty much, uh, the, the, the testing is pretty much done. So, um, we're helping to tie some of the loose ends, uh, we're the last to sign? So we're really signed, Dase County is signed, y'all is signed?
Watershed Association has that fine and then now waiting on y'all and then Texas State will be the last to sign if we wrap up the table.
Okay, good. And, um, the, our city attorney has looked over the I L A book for us and for Wimberly, and, and it's, uh, and it's all good. So it's really sort of a, you know, we've already said we want to do this, unless there's any, any questions or concerns, then send this. Uh, if you have any questions for Jenna or, um, just in general, well, I wouldn't stand a motion to accept it.
I move that we approve the updated interlocal agreement for the Blanco Cypress Watershed Protection Plan.
A second.
So the motion is to, uh, approve the updated interlocal agreement for the Blanco Cypress Watershed Protection Plan, uh, etc. Yes, sir. So I was, I was thinking about this, how does this have to do, this Cypress Creek have to do with Wood Creek? And the answer, I, I actually already answered my question. But the answer is that it is the boundary, the western boundary of the city of Wood Creek. It, and people enjoy it, whether it's the swimming bowl, hopefully it'll be open, I think it will be pretty soon. Um, or whatever happens to be, but it's an integral part of the city of Wood Creek. Okay. Obviously, when you look at the pictures that we have of the city of Wood Creek, guess what's in it? The creek. And.
That picture, right, there, which, which is, uh, actually not, it's actually in the city of Wood Creek.
It's, it's maybe half of it if you look at.
Yeah.
If you look, if you look at the city of Wood Creek, you know, I, I think the.
Right, I knew it. It moves.
Or, I think, but anyways. So it, yes, it is an important part of the city of Wood Creek and without that creek, we would be much less than we are. So appreciate all your efforts.
Yeah, all of Wood Creek.
Yeah. We would. The belly.
Um, okay, this is twenty thousand dollars per year budget, what is it overall with other components, what's the total budget?
Well, uh, Wimberly is committing twenty thousand a year as well and, uh, the Hayes County is supporting the Meadows Center. So we're not contributing financially, but contributing staff time and our energy and efforts. Um, so, and then I believe the Watershed Association is contributing primarily match, but some supporting efforts. And they contributed, um, I guess around fifteen thousand dollars over the past six months, six to nine months, to carry the, the cost of water quality monitoring while we were working to finalize the agreement and secure funding. And, and then, so the county is, has committed for two and a half years to about, uh, I believe it's I can't remember the exact number, but it was, it's around three hundred thousand, primarily to support a full-time Watershed Coordinator that's gonna be focusing all of their time on, on the efforts of, of this project. In addition to the water quality monitoring that the Meadows Center will be doing. And a portion of the overall efforts, including education and workshops. We have a lot of, um, planning to do once, once this is secured and, and executed to convene an executive committee that will identify the priorities of the project once we, once we take off. But the overall goal is to continue the water quality monitoring, identify, um, threats to water quality, also identify threats to flow and address those within this project.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did I hear you correctly that Hayes County signed up for two and a half years?
Yes.
What happens after two and a half years?
We will.
Come back to us?
We will come back to it.
Okay, so this commitment is for two and a half years.
Yes, it was originally free, but that was the beginning in, um, the fiscal year twenty-four, so we're kind of, we're kind of into that now. So they've committed through the end of this year plus two more years. Yes.
October of twenty-six.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, I'm not, I'm not gonna put him on the spot, but, uh, he's, and he'll be over there with Aqua Texas. And, um, and Aqua and, um, Wimberly Water are also listed as potential partners.
Yes.
And I know that, that, uh, that at least, at least Wimberly Water was pretty active with the Cypress Watershed uh, plan, when we met, um, I know that Tugar was in those meetings and we have, we have talked to the Aqua leadership about them taking a role in this, but the, the first thing we had to do is get the, the municipal, the county, the main college together, so we'll also put some deep under, uh, under our, our water partners to help us protect this place. Any other questions? All right, so, um, without further ado. So. So, all favor for the second, or raise your hand like. More votes, thank you, Bernard.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have a signed full copy?
I haven't received that, that was what I was wanting to ask, but I.
Okay, I can board it right now, I do have the conversion.
Okay.
Once you get a fully executed document.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, I asked, I asked Charlie about that, and it's like, is it just like one copy that keeps floating around? How many people sign it, so, so in this case, you can add signature pages, the, the combined signature pages are viable, so. All right, well, great, thank you, that's great, great, good work, you're all. All right, next item on the agenda, number five, we just got to take a couple of actions to approve and ordinance the public information policy of the city.
Can you react?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the ordinance of adopting a public information policy.
Second.
Um. If I may, yes, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thank you.
You'll be attached.
Actually, I just have a question for the three attorney, on page forty-five of the packet, on line ninety-five, section B, when it speaks to all city officials and employees for deep information, does this exclude advisory body members? Um, I'm looking at the packet, I'm looking on line.
Yeah.
No evidence. Line ninety-five, are we on the same other row?
Yeah.
Am I looking for it? Oh, maybe. There we go, all right, okay, all city official, police show, uh, typically advisory bodies are not, that's a good city officials. You can include that in that, if we want to make it clear. I was just curious, because we have advisory bodies, and they feel important, or, and they create documents that I, maybe should be part of the process to some degree, um, uh, you know, somebody who processes it. But, all right, I guess I would ask for your legal opinion.
Under, under the state law, they're, they're subject to the.
If they have documents that are subject, that they, and that they have, that are, that obtain the city business, they have, they have an obligation, we ask for them, they have an obligation to turn them over, regardless of the policy. In your legal opinion, would it be good to state that?
Or, or.
Actually, it's good policy, we can include a definition for city officials, that makes clear it's anybody who, um, does work for the city, because you and I have an obligation, assuming it's not a current client privilege, right, to turn over documents that I own, that are subject to policy.
So we would just add under definitions?
And for clarity, we could pass that with a motion of.
Yes.
That, that is.
Yes. If I can, if I can ask, no, don't, don't pass it until we bring it back to you to mature that language.
Correct.
Yeah. Just wait for the language.
That's fine, doesn't matter to me.
That is, that's, that's the one, so.
Is a motion needed to give directions to staff or legal or any one of the.
Um, I have a motion to, uh, I think a motion to, or the ordinance, well, if you want, you want to include the definition for city officials, then, and staff is asking that we bring that back, and a motion to direct staff to bring it back to the definition of city officials.
I move to amend to include the city attorney to create a definitions for city officials that includes advisory boards.
Okay. Good, all right, so the, the motion is that we're instructing the city attorney to revise.
I need to, uh, sorry.
Please restate this.
Yeah.
The motion was to amend, to include the city attorney to create a definition for city officials that includes advisory boards.
And return back to council for approval.
Oh, sorry.
And to return back to council for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Because otherwise we're applying that we're.
Second.
Your second, okay, so, motion by Councilmember Grummer, and second by Councilmember Richardson to, um, uh, ask the city attorney to create a definition including, um, just my favorite, city officials to include their advisory bodies, et cetera, and then return to council for final approval. Any further discussion? After vote of.
Continue, um, so that would be just a, an additional definition added under section B.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Um, should be easy to do, so, we've got a, show of hands, or raise your hand, say aye to approve.
Aye.
Any ayes, no, that's unanimously, thank you very much. Next item, um.
We have a main motion, also.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, and to the main motion, as amended, sorry, um, I get so excited.
Put the mini end.
All right, so we'll, um, vote on the main motion as amended. Show of hands, please, and say aye, um, any ayes, no, okay, thank you. Um, so the motion, uh, approved, uh, had been amended. Now, next item number six is to discuss and take appropriate action on an ordinance setting monthly and annual time limits for requesting city records.
Aye, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve the ordinance setting monthly and annual time limits for requesting city records.
Second, second, um, Hamrick. Um, any discussion, any, um, council discussion or, um, anything from the city manager on this? Pretty straightforward, yes, so we've already discussed this, I believe, at length, and including with the city attorney, um, making clear why we were doing it and why it was necessary. That's correct. So, but that in mind, the motion is to approve an ordinance setting monthly and annual time limits for requesting city records. Moved by Councilmember Grummer and seconded by Councilmember Hamrick, on favor, please, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Any ayes, no, all right, so passes unanimously. Moving on, Bernard. That's a bit of a desperate. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is executive session, um, I don't have a reasonable one on the floor question.
Yes, you do.
Okay, well, it would be helpful if I knew.
I thought we talked about it already, and I sent you an email on Friday as well about.
I, I literally have no idea what legal.
I will tell you what it is when we get in there, then, okay, do not remember our conversation.
I actually got an email from you, and it made no sense.
Okay, then I remind you of our conversation that we had with our engineers, then.
Okay, because I don't have any, but, I don't, I have no idea, I mean, if it's a policy issue, not a legal issue, we can have it.
No, it's a legal issue.
Okay, that they need to be aware of?
Yes.
To make, to make, to give advice on?
Yes.
They get the direction of somebody?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, um, you got the.
Yes.
Okay, um, then I have, I'm here for twenty-five most. Seven-ten, and, uh, we don't want to executive session, so we're gonna go into the other office?
Yeah.
We'll go to the good office. Not sure how long this will take, but if you want them to stay, or.
There's nothing active with that.
Yeah.
Well, if there's some kind of vote that needs to happen.
There will be a vote afterwards.
Just so she understands the process, we can't vote in an executive session, but if in that discussion it comes to turn that there needs to be a decision made, we would exit and come out and have a vote.
That will be on record.
Yeah, yeah, there will be recorded, then. I bet your card, actually.
I bet you the camera.
Oh, okay, no problem, this guy was in town, he didn't do legit, right?
All right, it is seven forty-two P M, on Wednesday night eight, and we come out to executive session, we're set in regular sessions, no action will be taken during a executive session. Um, and next item on the agenda is council consideration for agenda items of measuring the meeting.
Uh, INN Committee will be meeting on the fourteenth, and I will report on the results of that.
Right.
Do you remember what I want?
Did I have a matter? I did?
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
Oh, they're the same one.
What are you thinking about?
I don't know, I have an email.
Um, you may have to remind me, because the, the item that, the item that I may be bringing is in regard to, um, being able to take care of the little, so, would be dry down below our maintenance area, but there's some question about whether we can legally or not, or what that would be, so we've got that, you know, Charlie's looking at that, um, but, um, but anyway, so I've, I've got ready to go, but I'm not putting it on the agenda until, you know, there's a possibility that, or what, have I forgotten?
All right, hold on.
Mayor Porton.
All right, I'm gonna find my email again. One wire, one wire resolution. One rubber.
No, I said that to, to y'all, or.
About your task force, but then you mentioned, maybe it should be the second nominee.
Yeah, yeah, but I was, I was leaving that to y'all, so I, I hadn't thought about it since I was like delegated it, in the water task force.
Okay, the little.
So, um, I mean, I mean, it may come up, but.
Well, we, like, so the water task force will be producing some items coming up, I mean, I've announced that already before, um, to be able to say exactly which ones they can do that, you know, um, so, yeah.
Yeah, and Wimberly has a one-wire resolution, and, and so the thought is that if we can make that value-wise, it would be, it'd be good, and so I sort of thought that it was most appropriate that I can turn it over to the water company.
Sorry.
No, I don't think that we need a council vote to turn that over, we just need a council, we're really having a discussion here, so isn't this just supposed to be?
Just bringing up items.
All right, so, any other items that will be? Hold on, any other parks? Not yet, no, we can cancel slash postpone the last meeting, I expect it will happen by the next two P M. All right, then, with nothing, events.
Well, we discussed the revenue when it's sponsored before.
Yes.
Next time.
Yes, oh.
That question.
All right, all right, okay, so.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Seven forty-four?